Good morning, dear students, dear learners and today related to Diploma in Medical Legal System, I will be briefing you about the case study. Myself, Dr. Sanikadeshmukh, who is a program lead for this program, Diploma in Medical Legal System. Before I start with the presentation, I just wanted to make it clear that there is a slight change in the nomenclature of symbiosis school for open and distance learning to symbiosis school for online and digital learning, which is recently done now. Now, related to case study, many of the students have queries related to the case study, how it is to be done, how to do it, where to go, which site to access and all that. So, I think so by this presentation, most of your queries will be solved. Most of you might have finished with your assignments and doing the case study. Now, related to Diploma in Medical Legal System, that is GMS case study, which is done to apply knowledge of medical ethics and legal systems in day-to-day practice, knowledge to respond in terms of medical legal litigation, negligence, legal administrative issues in the hospitals and this case study, it has got two components. One is continuous, that is case study one and term and assessment, that is case study two. So, there are two components for case study, continuous assessment and term and assessment. In continuous assessment, we have case study one and in term and assessment, we have case study two. Now, related to the timelines and the marks for this case study. In the continuous assessment, as I briefed you, that there is case study one. In case study one, there are two submissions, submission one and submission two. Submission one of case study one is of fifty marks. The last date of submission is fifteenth July, twenty twenty-two. So, most of you might have, might be doing this case study one and most of them have solved and some have queries, so I will brief you related to case study one. And second is submission two, which is of twenty marks and the last date is fifteenth August, twenty twenty-two. Next is term and assessment, which is case study two, submission three, which is of thirty marks and the last date is fifteenth October, twenty twenty-two. So, these are the timelines and the marks for case study. Now, yes, about the case study one, submission one. As a part of continuous assessment, the learners are required to submit two cases on the medical legal topics. In the learner handbook, we have given you these topics and you can choose any two topic or you can choose any one topic and write two cases or you can choose two topics and write two different cases. So, we have given you, but there, there is need to solve only two cases, not more than two cases. Yes, there are queries of students whether, how many cases, two cases. Topics, you can choose one topic or any two topic to solve two cases. I think so it is clear. In case study one, submission one, you need to submit two cases. To move the two cases, you can choose any topic from this list here below. Yes, now when you start the case study, what, what is to be done? First is the introduction of the topic. You will need to find out the case, you can take the case from the hospitals, you can take the case from the study material, you can take the case from various website and you can prepare the case study. Now, first introduction is the general statement introducing the topic. You should write, if you are selecting the topic, you should write about that topic in short. That is introduction, explaining with the reason why you choose this topic. Then you write, need to write body of the case. Sorry, I have written essay to the body of the case. The learner needs to stress upon discussing the supporting and opposing points to the topic about his or her opinion about the topic and in brief about the case, history about the case is to be written. Then comes the conclusion part. In the conclusion part, you are using closing sentences, that is suggestion of for the future, something remarkable or what is the relation between the introduction and the conclusion? What is in the end we write about the act, how the act is passed, so that you need to write about that. And next is for references, I request everyone to use the APA format. When you put on Google the APA format, you get, you get to know how to write about APA format. So, this is about the instructions, which is given in the learner handbook and you have to go accordingly for case study. Yes, very important are the formatting guidelines. Font type should be Arial or Calibri and the spawn size should be twelve. The line spacing should be one point five between the lines. You can add tables, graphs, charts, whatever is applicable. The maximum word count is three fifty to four hundred. The learner needs to upload the case study one in the learning management system. I will brief you how it is to be uploaded in the learning management system. So, I think so everybody got to know about the formatting guidelines for type, Arial or Calibri, size twelve, line spacing one point five, word count three fifty to four hundred and you should upload the case study in the learning management system. So, that was about case study one, submission one. Now, I will brief you about case study one, submission two. Now, submission two, it is a part of continuous assessment and the learners are required to submit only one case on the medical legal topic mentioned below. Very important, only one case. In this, you need not write two cases, write only one case. Now, the topics are given like commercial dealings in human organs, unfair trade practices, vicarious liability, this, this is, it's a law veto, punishment for violation of B M W rules, hanging and strangulation, drowning, homicide and so on. So, you can write any case related to this topic. Only one case is to be written in submission two and this also same thing. Introduction of the topic, body of the case, conclusion and references. Now, very important, where you will find the dummy sample of this case study. These are the two below links given, which you can put, which you can find cases and likewise case you can prepare and you can, you can prepare the case study. So, these are the two site you can go and you can get the case studies. I will show you the sample case study also, so that you come to know how it is to be done. Before I go to the sample case study, I will tell you how to upload the case study. Once the case study, you have done with the case study, you go to, in your LMS, you go to the tab submission. You click on this step submission. When you click on this step submission, you get your case study one, your two, your three. So, when you click on this, you have to upload here the case study one. Here you have two submission one, here upload the case study one, submission two and your case study two, submission three. So, this is where you have to upload the case studies. So, this is about the case studies. I will tell you, I will show you one sample case study, so that you get an idea how it is to be done. Your queries right in the chat box, whatever your queries are, I will be sharing you one sample case study. Yes, this is the sample case study one of Diploma in Medical Legal System. Now, whatever list of topics is given to you from there, one of the student has selected female feticide in India. Initially, you need to write introduction. So, in introduction, she has written about the female feticide. So, this is the introduction. In short, you write about the female feticide. Then body of the case study, in the body of the case study, the student has written one case. Fact of the case is written about the female feticide, which is increasing, which was increasing and related to PCPLDT actually later on. What was the issue? Issue was PNDT was visible or not? Yes, and then what was the judgment? What did the Supreme Court tell? So, this is in short, she has written how the Supreme Court was not satisfied and what are the reasons behind that. So, very important, so this way you can point out the reasons. A very important is conclusion. Written conclusion, how it is to be avoided. So, this, this is one case study which I showed you, related to female feticide. I repeat again. This is the sample case study. First, you write the title, write introduction. In introduction, first you write about female feticide in India. In short, you write, that is will be the introduction. Then you will write one case. And related to that case, you write the facts, the issues and the judgment passed. And what are your views about that case? You need to write the points and in conclusion, that is in the end, you need to write the closing sentence, that is your suggestion about the case. What should be done in future? So, you can write in short about this case. So, this way I show you the case. Now, I request you to write your queries in the chat box. Your font size, you can use Roman, you can use Calibri. There is no such, which is given in the instructions. Font size and which you should use. Yes, one of the query is that in the instruction, it is not written, any, only two case studies. It is written in the instructions. You go through the learner handbook, in the learner handbook and the case study section, we have clearly mentioned that you have to do any two case studies from the below topics. And for case submission two, it is written only one case study. Yeah, font is Times Roman or Calibri, you can use any. Please write your queries in the chat box. One of the student is Gitu Gavash has written about the font size, you can use Times Roman or Calibri. For the case study and in the instructions, in the learner handbook, it is clear cut mentioned the number of case studies to be done. Submission one, two case studies and submission two, one case study. Submission one, two case study for fifty marks, submission two, one case study for thirty marks. So, this is clear cut written. Yes, submission to twenty marks, yes. Any more queries? Please write in the chat box. Yes, I repeat in the presentation. We will show you the presentation and repeat again, related to case studies. See, case study one, submission one, fifty marks. Case study two, case study one, submission two is of twenty marks. For fifty marks, write any two case studies and for twenty marks, write only one case study. And this clear cut mention, these are the topics which are given, sample topics. You should write any two case studies. Two cases are to be written from this. Suppose I select female feticide, I will write two cases of, I can write one case on female feticide and one case on PCP NDT. Understood? So, these are the sample topics given. I need to choose any two topics and write two case study. Suppose I, I selected criminal abortion, I write one case on that and female feticide, one case on that. So, only two cases are to be written, total two cases of fifty marks. And in submission two, one case. Now, these are the topics given. On this, you have to choose only one topic. Suppose I choose the topic of drowning and I have to write only one case on that. I think so you got it, what I mean to say. Yes, word limit, minimum it should be three hundred to four hundred. It might be, that is average which we give. Exact word count is not given there, but three hundred to four hundred minimum limit has is there. Yes, in sample which I showed, it is given in detail. There are, it might be in short also, three hundred to four hundred is the minimum word limit. Maximum it, it can extend. I have already shown you the links. Karun.com and one more link I have shown for website to see them, to find the cases. www dot doctorintheport dot com and indiankaranum dot org. So, you can go to this website and you can see the cases. Remember, minimum word count is three hundred to four hundred. It might extend, it might extend to thousand also. So, don't worry about the word. Any more queries, please write in the chat box. Yes, for case study two, submission three, I will be taking the session later on. Today, I have taken session only for case study one, submission one and submission two. Please write your queries in the chat box. Yes, one of the question asks you, can you explain about the PPT? Yes, now related to the topic, you have to prepare the PPT. Whatever topic is given, you have to prepare the PPT about that topic. About ten to fifteen slides are to be prepared and the format of the PPT is also given to you. Accordingly, you should write the content. Now, if some topic is given related to that case, the case related to that law, you write about the law, you can write the cases related to that law. In PPT, ten to fifteen slides is enough, just write about the act, about that topic in short. And in points, we not give complete explanation, you have to write in points in the PPT. As if you are presenting, you are preparing a presentation, you can write in that way and prepare the PPT in that way. The PPT, the format of the PPT is already given to you accordingly, you can prepare and you can submit. Here is the website for finding the cases I told you, I will repeat again if you want. www dot doctorintheport dot com and indiankaranum dot org. You can see this website. Yes, now related to term and assessment, I need not, you need not think about that now. That is in the end, term and assessment is submission three for case study two. When that case analysis is done, I will be taking one more lecture for case study three, term and assessment. So, don't worry. Yes, I repeat the website, www dot doctorintheport dot com and indiankaranum dot org. So, when you go through these links, there are cases which are given. You can before those cases or you can take the cases from the study material which is submitted to you or where you are working in the hospitals. You need not mention the name of the hospital or the patient. You can use the word X and Y and you can prepare the case study and you can submit. Yes, I showed you now the sample case study about female feticide. Likewise, you can prepare the case study and you can submit. I have already shown you the sample case study. Yes, any more queries? Yes, I repeat, if you have any academic queries related to the acts, we have advocate, advocate Dr. Millen Samaki who is available on Saturdays. He can, if you call him on Saturday, if you call in office number, he will be available from ten to one. If you have any queries, academic queries related to act, you want to ask in detail, so he will help you out, he is available on Saturdays. Yes, related to the submission and all that, I will myself will guide you. We are available on the phone call, which is given, the mobile number five times eight nine double two five two, which we are available, Mr. Dilip Dilakar and I myself, Dr. Sanika, we will be available on the email ID is given to you and on the phone call, phone numbers, which is available, office numbers, which we are available from nine to four three. Yes, any more queries? One of the student is asking about PPT. PPT related to the topic, you have to prepare the PPT and submit. We have given the format, we have given you the topic. Prepare the topic in the PPT format in bullets and you have to submit, that's all. Yeah, plagiarism report is required to be submitted. In the end, after you finish writing the case study, in the end, you can submit the plagiarism report with your signature, you need to submit a scan copy. The end, yes. We have given the plagiarism report, the format is given in the learner handbook after the case study. So, that you have to submit for, after you submit the case study, you have to prepare the plagiarism report, you have to sign and submit the scan copy. You need not copy paste the things. You can write, use your own words, own language can you use and you prepare the case study. Yes, Gitu, you have to, I again repeat for case study one, submission one, two cases and submission two, only one case. I repeat again, submission one, two case studies and submission two, only one case study is to be submitted. You can choose the topic for the case study, which is given. Sample topics are given in the learner handbook, you can choose from that. Yes, any more queries? I think so you have, you are now briefed about the case studies. I will be taking the next session for term and assessment, that is case study two. Related to the case laws, related to the PPT, related to the essay or submission or exercise. If you have any query, you can call, contact us on the number, which we have given, the office number. Yes, any queries? Yes, Gitu has said that the template given for PPT does not open. So, I think so you only have this problem, then too again we will look into this. Related to the PPT, I will check again. And upload again in the LMS, related to the template of the PPT. I will note it down. The template of the PPT will be checked in the LMS again, so that it opens. It's already checked and everybody can access. If you have problem, please see, repeat it, do it again, there might be some problem. But then do I check it might. Yes, any other query? Yes, I think so no more queries now. Yes, I think so no more queries now. Yes, plagiarism includes copying, quoting directly, paraphrasing, using ideas, cutting and pasting. Plagiarism declaration is required for both the case studies. We have given you the plagiarism format that you have to fill and you have to send the scan copy. For queries you may contact on five times eight nine double two five eight. Email ID, my email ID is medicare at the rate ssodl.edu.in. And Mr. Dilip Kilekar supervisor at the rate ssodl.edu.in. We have consultant advocate Dr. Milin Samaki who is available on Saturdays. From ten AM to one. Plagiarism consent need to be uploaded separately for case study submission one and submission two. So two you have to submit. Yes, any more queries? You need to write plagiarism consent is to be uploaded for each case after every case. Supposing submission one there are two cases, after each case you need to submit the plagiarism consent. The format which is given to you. Any more queries? Should I end the session now? Two more minutes, any queries, please write in the chat box. Yes, any more queries? Okay then now I end this session, thank you for patient listening and if you have any queries, I repeat. You can call us on the office number five times eight nine double two five two. And or you can mail us on email ID, medicare at the rate ssodl.edu.in. Okay then, thank you.